All right, I'll go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the City Council for February 7th, 2022. Councilmember Saunders is still out, he's still unwell. Councilmember Mosley advised that he likely would not be able to make it, his mother-in-law passed away and he's out of the state. So neither of them are here. We will move on to invocation and pledge of allegiance, Councilmember Gardner.
Let's pray. Father God, thank you so much for this evening, Lord, and we're grateful that we can come together tonight as a body to work, do the city's business, Lord, and we're thankful for this position that we have to serve the community, God. We just ask in all things that we do that we will make decisions that are in the best interest of Mammell and that it will continue to help Mammell to grow and to be prosperous, Lord. Father, we're thankful for all those that serve our city each and every day, Lord. And this evening, we're especially mindful for the Mosley family and the passing of Cheryl's mother. We just ask for their safety in travel and the comfort of knowing the memories that they have with her, Lord. And also for Councilmember Saunders, we just continue to pray for his health and that he can recover and be back with us sometime soon, Lord. Again, thank you for all that you've done and the blessings that you've given us in life, and we just ask for your wisdom tonight as we conduct the city's business. In your son's name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Gardner. We have Mayor's Employee of the Month, we're delaying that. The recipient's mother is unwell and they had to leave and were unable to make it tonight, so we decided to go ahead and postpone that. Just announcement about the packet, y'all should have received an updated agenda. The only thing that changed on that agenda was the numbers of the resolution approving the preliminary development plan and the resolution authorizing settlement. Those were just updated to account for a resolution that was passed. We then gave you a copy of those resolutions, they're identical except they're now properly numbered. Just wanted to point that out in case there were any questions on that. With that, we will move to the approval of the minutes of January 18th meeting. If there's no discussion on that, I entertain a motion to adopt. I've got a motion in a second to adopt the minutes from January 18th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. I will do my best to move the meeting as expediently and efficiently as Councilmember Mosley did in my absence at the last meeting. I watched that from the, I watched the video from the airplane as I was deboarding and so I caught some comments. Councilmember Gardner said at the end and had to immediately send him a text message. But anyways, with that, we'll move on to public comments. We've received no public comment cards, so we've got financial statement review. Liz, you're up.
Good evening. Going to get plugged in here and see if that works, I'm on the HDMI. Maybe? There we go. So we are looking at December 2021. These are our preliminary year-end financials for 2021. Just to kind of note on these, all of our bank account reconciliations are complete through 12, that says 12/31/22, it should say 21 on our slide, sorry about that. Most of our accrual entries that we do typically at year-end have been made. There will be some additional entries that we'll have to make in the coming months because the period, the timing period for our accruals is 60 days from the end of the year. We're not 60 days through the end of the year yet, so we feel like we've really captured all of the expenses, but there are some additional revenues that will come in that will ultimately get booked to 2021. So as you're looking at the sales tax report that was in the back of this council packet and it shows receipts for January, those have actually already been booked to December of 2021 because they were 2021 sales tax receipts for funds collected in, by the state in December. So, just kind of a perspective, all of that. So we'll be wrapping up our final kind of audit prep and getting everything finalized for 2021. Should be by the end of February, the end of that 60-day period, we should have everything ready to roll. So, taking a look then at our general fund on the revenue side. County millage tax is $29,000 ahead of budget year-to-date and $5,000 less than the prior year. This is one where we still will have one more month's receipts that we will receive in February that will book to '21. So, right now it's looking like it's $5,000 behind from year-end. There's usually $15,000 to $20,000 that comes in in February that will be booked till last year. Franchise fees, year-to-date was $95,000 ahead of budget and $103,000 ahead of the prior year. State turnbacks were $1,000 ahead of budget and $56,000 more than the prior year. County sales tax was $632,000 ahead of the budget and $716,000 ahead of the previous year. And that was for sales in November that were collected in December. And that'll be everything for the sales tax kind of picture. City sales tax, $348,000 ahead of budget and $476,000 more than the prior year. Police is $10,000 ahead of budget year-to-date, $73,000 more than the prior year. We likely will still have our Q4 PSAP, the 911 dispatch payment that will be coming in. Hopefully we get it in the right time period, sometimes it doesn't come until March or April, so it'll just kind of depend whether it ends up in '21 or '22 based on when we actually receive that one. Fire Department, it was $78,000 ahead of budget and $103,000 more than the prior year. Parks and Recs ended up $104,000 behind budget at the end of the year, but $50,000 more than the prior year and their expenses were $199,000 under budget. So they maintained their kind of departmental bottom line, so to speak, and kept those expenses in line with where their revenues were a little behind budget. Same in Senior Wellness, $81,000 behind the budget, $23,000 more than the previous year, and their expenses were $54,000 under the budget. Ms. Laney's income notes just kind of on there, it's been there since earlier this year. Overall, the revenues for the year were $1.1 million ahead of the budget and $2.3 million more than the previous year. Expenditures, in most departments, were below budget year-to-date. Other a few, other than a few, and it looks like my note cut off here, but I'll kind of go through. I have some notes on the screen here. I took a look at the three departments that look, that are currently showing over budget as a department at the end of the year. The administration is related to, it's actually a non-departmental transfer, but I lumped it into admin on this financial report. They're related to a transfer to the Capital Improvement Fund, which is part of some of our bond funds. In doing all of our reconciliation and cleanup, there were some bond monies that in 2012 actually got transferred to the general fund because the project was over. But they're actually, still need to be in those bond funds. They'll go back to redate, repay debt or use towards that project. So we had to kind of clean that up, move those back over. So, we're not really over budget, so to speak, it was more of a cleanup, transfer from one fund to another on that one. And then, these two, we may have to look at bringing a budget amendment to you guys later this month for 2021's budget to adjust the departmental, because that's the legal level of control on the budget. For the CED, they're a little over budget related to that vacation payout of their, when our CED director retired. And in planning and permits, our health insurance costs ended up higher than budgeted. So we may have budgeted some positions to only be an employee-only plan and they ended up on a family plan, put us over budget for the year. So I was able to, since Friday, since I published this report, do a little bit more look into what those three areas were, where we were over budget at the departmental level. Obviously, at the end of the year, the fund balance was $1.3 million over the required minimum balance and the current year revenues were $1.6 million more than expenses. So overall, good into the year there and we were able to end our year ahead of that required minimum reserve, which if, after our conversations at the beginning of the year was, we weren't so sure where we were going to land on that one. Street fund, currently year-to-date is $27,000 ahead of budget and $6,000 ahead of the prior year. The state turnback funds, again, in the street fund, they'll probably have one more millage payment, so that'll increase a little bit more. State turnback funds were $140,000 ahead of budget, $99,000 more than the previous year. And that street aid program was $70,000 ahead of budget and $70,000 more than the previous year. Both the streets and senior services transportation departments ended their years under the budget on the expense side and the current available street fund balance at the end of December was right at 5.2 million. Sanitation fund, revenues were $77,000 ahead of budget year-to-date, $78,000 less than the previous year. There may be an additional revenue accrual that I need to look into here when I looked at this variance and I have not had a chance to do that at this time. It may be the timing of some of the funds coming from Central Arkansas Water. Operating expenses were $91,000 under budget year-to-date and $29,000 less than the previous year. The personnel expenses were $228,000 under budget and $29,000 less than the prior year. Fund balance, my note cut off here, my apologies, I did not proof this very well Friday before I emailed it out at the last minute. So our sanitation fund balance was right at 2 million at the end of the year. I will say we are working, while sanitation was under expense quite a bit in personnel costs this year, we obviously still had people working in sanitation picking up those, the trash and making those trash runs. They just weren't necessarily people that were originally hired to be throwers and so we've worked with our HR department. This year, when people are working, maybe they're public works or street employees, but they're having to, being pulled and they're going to have to go be a thrower for a day, we're actually coding their time sheets differently so that the sanitation fund will still get those personnel cost expenses. We weren't quite set up to do that this last year, but we really noticed it quite a bit and so we may end up with openings in the future, but the expenses should remain fairly in line in that sanitation fund so that we have an accurate picture of our costs to provide the service. Other funds, I put some notes in here about the Capital Improvement Fund and the Police and Fire Fund in the packet. You may have noticed some of the grant funds weren't in the packet this month. That's because I have not finished closing those out and kind of wrapping those up for the year and so I didn't want to put those balance numbers up there to look at. But I did want to give you guys a little bit of an update from the Finance Department while I'm here. The 2018 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Audit are complete. I have books over there, I'll hand you guys in just a moment. Audit firm Craft of Each will be here at the next City Council meeting to present that report to you. We wanted to go on and give you a copy of it today and then you can have a couple weeks to look at it before Mr. Craft is here to present that to you. And the 2019 report and audit are in progress. Our auditors are expected to be onsite in the upcoming weeks and we're now beginning work on that report. And then again, all our bank reconciliations are current and are now being completed monthly in accordance with, of course, best practice, but also state law. So we've made big strides there as well, just doing what we need to do day in, day out to keep us running.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments? Councilmember Gardner?
I was going to ask about the audit, you covered 18 and 19. Those are the only ones that we have contracted out, right? So '20 and '21, what are the thoughts there?
We are working on putting together a request for proposal for audit firms. We have not gone out to bid on our big audit services in a number of years, partially because we were behind. And so we'll be preparing that to go out probably early March, have it out for a month or so and then come back with the selection so that we can move forward and have whatever audit firm we select for 2020. Usually you do a three-year kind of engagement with the option to extend it to additional years. So it would probably be an approval for engagements for '20, '21 and '22. And '20 and '21's audits would happen later this year. If we can get '20's completed by the June 30th deadline, that's our goal.
And with regards to the timing, we talked about getting an RFP sooner. One of the goals is to get the RFP award and then instantly bring them onsite. We're not looking for a big dead time between the RFP process and when they start. So that is why we're waiting a little bit for the RFPs, to get those under contract until we've got the 19 about ready to come to y'all.
Because the 19 would have to be approved prior to beginning '20, right?
Yeah, you can't really, well, we could start some audit work, but we can't start the report and, and most auditors are going to want to see your year-end report before you start working on a new year, so.
Super. Y'all been busy, thank you.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns? If not, I'd entertain a motion to accept the financials. Thank you. We've got a motion in a second to accept the financials. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. We will move on to Planning Commission Report, Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, sir. There were three items that were acted upon. The first was a preliminary plat for the Tractor Supply Warehouse Distribution Center. That was approved and they also asked for a variance request so that they could begin doing grading work prior to the building permit being issued. That was also approved. The second item was the Brock Townhomes on Isabel Court. That one had three separate variances that were requested and there were all good reasons for those and I won't go into those at this point, but they were all approved unanimously. They also approved the Preliminary Development Plan, which we will see tonight. They gave that a due pass recommendation actually to us. Then they approved the preliminary plat and the landscape plan. The last one was the grading permit that is also in our packet. And I'll say, from, you know, attending the Planning Commission meeting, between the work that city staff did along with the Planning Commissioner input, I think they came up with something that they all felt good about and that also was given a due pass recommendation. That was it.
Thank you, Councilmember Gardner. With that, we'll move on to procedural motion. I'd entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. I've got a motion in a second, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. We'll move on to unfinished business. The first item of unfinished business is the second reading of Ordinance 1057, Amendment to the zoning map. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 1057, an ordinance amending the Mammell zoning map and for other purposes.
Thank you. This is on second reading. We do have the applicant, representatives of the applicant, a whole host of folks here to answer any possible questions y'all may have. So I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion. Councilmember Mazzone?
Yeah, a few questions first for Mr. Grummer. It's more for looking at that. I just want to make sure, looking at the, looking at the map in the council packet, I'll make sure I got it through because you've got the one slash of PCD land. So after this, it's only that part, so it'll be a small slice above it and then to the east that we're not talking about, it's just kind of from Crystal Hill due west.
That's correct. I believe there are some parcels that are to the, to the north.
That's what it looked like on the map.
Right. And those parcels will require access to, from the side road. But when those develop out, they'll have to continue on access to the other parcels.
All right. If this is approved, is there anything, since this will be, you know, a waiver for some, for some residential, would that, would there be anything that in PCD currently that would be incompatible? That we would later go, well, we could, but because this is here, that could impact?
Not that I'm aware of. The PCD allows for C1 and C2 uses. The C2 allows for C1, so you have both of those compatibilities. The PCD does have, for, you can have some light industrial per se, but that comes at the discretion based on the type that's coming in. So possibly some three, C3 type warehouse. But for the most part, the majority of what you'll see in a C2 is the same in a PCD.
So there'll be no more limitations to anything else out there?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on Ordinance 1057?
Well, if you want a question, for Mr. Cox, if he's, if he's around. So kind of the same questions, I got, you know, the email you sent everyone. So I liked what I saw on there, eased some of my concerns. So kind of the same questions that I gave Mr. Grummer. So if you're, if this is, if this waiver for, you know, C2 is granted to you in there, is there any, would there be any contest, anything else commercial developed on those other PCD lands that would, that you feel would, would, that you guys would, would then, you know, fight because it would be incompatible with your, with your business?
Yeah, to be honest with you, I don't know that I've necessarily considered that, but we do have Denise Heinz with the, you know, developer to actually, you know, think, think that through. But, and Denise, did you kind of understand the question?
Yes, yes, I did. I'm Denise Heinz, partner with O'Reilly Development and an owner in the project. I can't think of any use that we'd have any problem with. We consider that our community is kind of transitional from true residential, traditional residential into commercial developments within the city. And I apologize, I was going to include our first project, which was in Blue Springs on a major intersection into town, so there was heavy retail and new commercial development. We were right behind that, then some more multifamily and residential and golf course across the street and it's perfect for it. So the closer we are to commercial, the better for our residents.
Thank you.
Anything else for me?
All right, any additional discussion on Ordinance 1057? If not, this will be on third reading at the next City Council meeting. All right, we will move on to, thank you all for coming. We will move on to the second reading of Ordinance 1058, Redistricting City Wards. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 1058, an ordinance redistricting city wards and for other purposes.
All right, thank you. This is, well, she's read the title. This is on second reading, I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion if there is any. If there's no discussion, this will be on third reading at the next City Council meeting. All right, we'll move on to new business. The first item of new business is the Planning Commission appointments, which is always fun. First of all, let me just see, Chase Turner, are you here? Chase Turner? Craig Johnson? Pat Landys? And Charles Lowe?
That's Charles, he's recovering from COVID right now.
Okay, okay. So there was a, y'all should have received an email from the city clerk today with that application and resume there. So what we'll go ahead and do, are you here on, to talk on his behalf, sir? Okay, just to, just to show that he is interested in show support, okay, great. Great, thank you. So what I'll go ahead and ask the applicants to do, it's not a requirement, but I'd ask, we'll go with Mr. Johnson first and then Ms. Landys, if you wouldn't mind stepping out into the lobby. It's not a requirement, it's an open public meeting, but it can be an unfair advantage if, if you get to hear all the questions and answers that get bombarded to Mr. Johnson beforehand. Yes, ma'am, we've got the, there's the map room. If you'll see Sarah Smith right there, she'll get you taken care of. Thank you for the honesty. Some folks, I think, would just sit out there and pretend they didn't hear the question. I will point, so. With that, Mr. Johnson, you're no stranger to this council, if you could please introduce yourself?
My name's Craig Johnson, 3 Sierra Valley Cove here in Mammell. Been a resident for 22 years. And on the, on the commission since '07, I replaced former Mayor Mike Watson when he stepped down and became mayor. So just some opening remarks, I guess if you bear with me, I, I've enjoyed being on the commission. I've got to work with a lot, a lot of your staff. I do enjoy giving back to the community, I feel like that's our charge to do to some extent. It's, it's not for the money, we do not get paid a dime for doing our services. But, you know, I'm a licensed professional engineer, practice engineering. We have a firm with my partners there in Little Rock and it fits well. Back upon one point in time, I was actually city engineer, what Mazon, Ramon does for you now. I did from like '03 to '05, somewhere through, somewhere through that piece of time. And I did, I did enjoy that too as well and I got to work with former Mayor Birch Johnson and there is no relation to that and I did enjoy that time as well too. So I'll, I'll stop and open it up to any questions that you may have.
Thank you, sir. Is there any questions from the council? Councilmember Holt?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
We've, we've done this before.
Yes, sir.
I remember that we, a question was raised that you are an engineer and sometimes there are things that come before the commission that you need to recuse yourself of. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that, that happens once in a while, some degree of, twice a year, three years?
You know, since, since I've been on the commission since '07, may have been one that I have been involved with. My, my firm is primarily focused in municipal water and wastewater, although I do have a client that will be coming before us at some point in time with North Little Rock Wastewater Utility. That would only be maybe perhaps the second and I'd have to go back and look and see if I had another conflict. So it's very rare.
Your, I think your attendance has been almost without exception, perfect attendance. Would you, have you had to miss very many meetings?
From, from time to time, I think I had to miss by one of my clients called an emergency meeting. He had some issues with a wastewater treatment plant that required some expertise and so from time to time, but I would think just overall, other than unplanned conflicts that arise, sometimes vacation is in there too as well, but not very often.
Attending a number of the meetings when I'm assigned, I've noticed I compare you to our council member, Steve Mosley. You're the most probing member. You will dig into it until, excuse the expression, hell freezes over as necessary. But at any rate, I feel like that you certainly focus to the maximum degree on the issues that are before us and you have to vote as we have to vote. I think everything that we do is very serious because it's not for us, it's for those people who elected us to be in that position. So I congratulate you on, on your past history and I wish you well.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Mr. Johnson? Councilmember Mazzone?
Yes, question highest for everyone, so. So what do you see as the role of the Planning Commission and what biggest challenges do you see ahead of us in the next five years?
The role of the Planning, the Planning Commission, just is similar, that you administer the government side. We administer- you administer the government side. We administer the application of, of, uh, of the codes and the, uh, the zoning for the city, preliminary development plans, uh, what you see before you today. Um, we do administer a policy and variances from time to time. Some of that stays local with the, with the commission, and some of it comes before you, as some of the items came before you, uh, that will be this evening. Um, I, I think the challenges of, of the commission right now, and they change, it, it changes almost from year to year, um, is that, um, you know, we are running out of land to develop, and, and we're trying to develop in accordance with a, a good business practice, a good practice that would be good for the constituents of Maumell, and something that makes sense for a business. So as you saw today, and, and, uh, Councilmember Gardner saw, is that we continue to get pushed a little bit with the variance side of things. And it's, it's a tough, uh, weight and game and balance. I shouldn't say it's a game. It, it's just a, it's a, it's a tough balance sometime. Not a game as far as the business before us, but i- it's, it's tough to be able to weigh that sometimes, the teeter totter game, if you will, um, to know what is always in the best benefit. Because historically, um, and Mayor Norris could say this as well too, when he was on the council and he served in, in, uh, uh, Ms. Krebs' position, is that we're, we're tough. We're, we, we hold a, a firm line. But as, as, as the remaining, uh, what was before us with tractor supply, it had to have a variance to be able to move forward. So, um, it's, it's sometimes, uh, more challenging as of late, and it just seems as of the last two to three years, that has been, been more of an issue that's been before us than what's been in the past. Because historically, um, we've not been too kind with variances. But as, as, as applications come through, um, there, there is good reasons to be able to accept them. So.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Johnson. Uh, thank you. You are free to stay in here.
Okay.
Um, and if we could get Ms. Landies? Councilmember Gardner?
This is, while she's coming in, just kind of a point of order question. Um, we are appointing two positions tonight, correct? And both of the terms end in 2026.
That is correct.
That's what I wanted to know.
And while we're waiting, I do want to let you guys know that Commissioner Stevens did give me a call, and due to his, uh, professional job responsibilities, he would not be able to, uh, have, make the time commitment for another term, which is why he did not submit his resume.
Thank you. Ms. Landies, I am saying that right, am I?
Landis.
Oh, I am not Landis. Uh, darn, I was so caught up.
That's okay. Everybody down here puts an R in it, Landers, you know. Unfortunately, I'm not one to lander.
Well, uh, uh, if you could just take a minute, uh, introduce yourself to the council and let them know anything that you want, and then we'll give them a chance to ask a few questions.
Okay, fine. Um, my name is, you know, is Pat Landis. I moved to Maumell about four and a half years ago. And I came from Peoria, Illinois. And when I was in Peoria, I was the director of planning and growth management. So we had planning and zoning, et cetera. I'm gonna take this off so you can hear me better.
And if you want, you can bring that mic down a little bit closer.
So prior to moving to Maumell, I looked at your housing codes, your planning, your zoning, your future land use map, the comprehensive plan. And I wanted to make sure I'd end up in a community that was well-planned. I'm not gonna invest money somewhere where it doesn't work. So when I flew down to look at houses, this was wonderful. You know, like the first thing you do is you drive down that boulevard with the controlled access points, and I went, yes, it works, you can do it. I mean, the trails, uh, this is just an extremely well-planned city. And I was real happy to make my home here. Later on, I had some occasions to go to the planning commission. And having had thirty years' experience working with commissions, I could tell that this was a commission that was getting the job done. They showed up, they were prepared, they'd done their homework, they were knowledgeable, they asked good questions, and it appeared to me that they were objective until they got to the point to make their decisions. When I heard about the opening with the planning commission, I thought it was a good match. I have the experience, and I have the time, and I have the interest. And my personal policy is that this year, I'm choosing to start to make more investments of my time locally. And so this was just a really good match. If you look at my resume, I have over thirty years' experience in the public sector, all dealing with planning, zoning, land development codes, building inspections, et cetera. That work was done in, uh, the city of Peoria, I told you, it has about a hundred and thirteen thousand people. And my message is real clear. I'm interested in this. I like to serve. I think I do a good job. I don't see this as a stepping stone for elected office. There's no way at all. I want to be a city councilman or on the quorum court. I also am not doing this to, because I have an axe to burn, or I had an agenda, you know, talk about the dog issue or something like that. So none of that is compelling me. And the good news is, I can make the time commitment. I talked to your director to get the idea of what that is. You know, you've got two meetings a month. And if you do it well, it takes time to prep for that and go on and look into sites. So any questions you have, I'd be glad to answer. And I was happy to submit a letter of interest to respectfully request consideration for the appointment, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I'm sure there will be a couple of questions. We'll wait. Councilmember Mazzoni?
Yeah, uh, definitely impressed her resume. Read it through. I'll put this off real quick so you can hear as well. Um, so my question, same question I'm asking everyone. So, um, what do you view as the primary role of the planning commission here in Maumell? And what challenges do you see for the next three to five years for us?
Well, I see the primary role is for them to do the administration of the code as it's written, or to identify those opportunities to improve it, because things change. You know, who knew ten years ago or fifteen years ago, we'd have to worry about electric charging stations? And that's a public policy issue you're gonna have to address. So they've got to take the codes and use them as the way they were intended and they're written, fairly and objectively. And if there's an issue, bring it to the council for a decision and get a policy ruling on that so they can make changes to it. As far as the challenges go, I think the challenges for any commissions this time, and for recent years, is time. You know, people are busy, and particularly during the pandemic, they're busier than they normally are, uh, particularly if they have children at home. And how is it that you can find well-qualified people that are willing to devote the time? Because it is a large time commitment. Um, I don't know how the office is run. I can tell you I've seen significant improvement in the written communications the last year or so. I mean, I think, wow, this is pretty cool. And there, I can get a lot of information from home. But, um, and I also think that you may be coming to the point that a lot of your planned vision needs to be revisited for several reasons. You've built off plan. That makes a difference. Um, and, and times are changing, so you've got to make sure that you're doing your plan work, that you have sufficient time to do good policy examination and come up with the regulations, but at the same time, not get ahead of it.
Thank you. Thank you. Any additional questions? Going once, going twice. Thank you, Ms. Landis.
You're welcome. And what is the next step in the process, please?
Uh, if you have a seat, uh, the city clerk will explain the voting process.
All right, thank you.
Madam City Clerk?
Well, okay. Uh, you guys did hear that, uh, Mr. Lowe is quarantined, and that was, he did, uh, give me that information to communicate that he is very interested in the position and would still like full consideration. So with that said, you guys are gonna be voting on two different seats tonight. They're both four-year terms. The first one is gonna be position one. Position one is currently held by Commissioner Johnson. You're gonna vote first round. We'll take the, uh, whoever gets the largest number from that round will get the position one seat. And then I'm gonna ask you guys again to vote again and for the position two seat. And, uh, obviously need legible signatures. You can print it.
In fact, we're looking for a printed name. If, if, if it's between the signature like mine that you can't read or a printed name, uh, do that.
And once, once you've made your selection for position one, please pass your tally down, ballot down to me.
Just a reminder, uh, both seats one and two are on a four-year term, uh, just starting out. All right. The individual, I feel like we need some drum roll. Uh, the individual appointed to seat one currently held by Craig Johnson is Craig Johnson. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, congratulations and condolences, uh, which I'm sure you'll understand that. Now, so we'll go ahead and vote for seat two. And just for the record, uh, we keep a tally of these votes. They are public record. Uh, it's just been the council's, um, uh, practice to not do an oral vote, so as to not feel. My, my understanding is, is so no one feels, uh, ostracized if they didn't get any votes. All right. Do y'all have a second ballot? Okay, go ahead and vote for position two. The options are Chase Turner, Pat Landis, and Charles Lowe. It's a nail biter. Looks like the, uh, individual appointed to seat two is Pat Landis. So, uh, thank you. Congratulations to both of y'all. Congratulations, or thank you to those who applied, uh, but weren't able to get it. I always recommend, folks, um, uh, continue to try and find positions. Uh, uh, anyone who wants to know what it's like to, to not get appointed and then end up serving a long time on the city council is free to, uh, contact Councilmember Saunders, uh, is that's a story he likes to tell. Um, so please, uh, remain active, and thank you very much, and congratulations to both of y'all. Did that answer your question on what the next step is, Ms. Landis? I'm sure Scott will ambush you about the second that you walk out the door in there. Thank you, guys. With that, we'll move on to the first reading of, um, ordinance 1052, amending the city code. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
Yes, sir. Beed enacted by the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1052, an ordinance amending chapter ninety-four of the Maumell City Code to provide for a grading permit, providing for an emergency clause and for other purposes.
Thank you. All right. So this came, uh, went through the planning commission, came to the city council. Uh, when it came to the council the last time, I received a, a massive amount of, uh, input from, uh, uh, primarily residential developers, but developers that were, um, had a lot of questions. And, and, and so myself, uh, Scott Grummer, and Sarah Smith all met with them, uh, uh, to discuss what some of those concerns are. One of the biggest changes, and then, and then after that, I came back to the council and asked y'all to refer back to the planning commission to include a few amendments. Probably the, the single biggest amendment that was made is, in the previous version, the grading permit was now a new step required for all developments, uh, residential, commercial. It was now a new step that just had to be done every single time. Um, and it is now currently an option that can be used if, uh, there is need for it. So one of the problems that we've had, um, is there's some property in Maumell that is not very developable, simply because the amount of time it would take from the time a purchaser was looking at buying that to when they could actually break ground on their, uh, business, their industry, is really prohibitive. In a lot of instances, uh, with the exception of, uh, a few zoning categories, you can't begin to do dirt work until the building permit is issued. And the building permit comes much later in the, the, the process. Uh, and so this grading permit would allow, uh, some grading work to occur at an earlier stage. Uh, one of our concerns in, in doing that is we didn't want to end up with big tracts of land where someone had come in and just sort of scalped it, flattened it, graded it, and then it sat that way, unused and dormant for long periods of time. And so it has some pretty harsh, uh, replanting penalties if that occurs, right? And so depending on, uh, the zone or, depending on where it is in the property, whether it's a, a, a construction area or disturbed area, it can be five to one replanning. That's, uh, for every significant tree that you take down, you may have to plant up to five trees, uh, if you're not developing that, um, land in a certain timeframe or depending on the category. I might have just confused that matter a little bit. But I'll go ahead and open this, um, for discussion if there is any. If there's no discussion, it'll be on second reading at the next city council meeting. All right. We'll move on to the next item of business, which is Resolution 2022-07, approving a preliminary development plan. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2020, 2022-07, approving the preliminary development plan, Isabel Court, Rock Town Homes.
All right. We do have, uh, the applicant here. I'm not sure if y'all wanted to say something, and we're just available if there was any questions or discussions. I should have asked beforehand, but I didn't. So if there's any questions, uh, they're, they're happy to answer them. Y'all should have a copy of the preliminary development plan, uh, in route. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I attended the planning commission on this, and, uh, it, it was an interesting discussion on the variances. And, um, I just, I kind of wanted to highlight those because, uh, our code is fashioned in such a way, um, that there are some very good reasons for variances to be issued. And, uh, after sitting through the planning commission, listening to this, um, they were all extremely good reasons. Uh, there was one about our, our, the way our city code is written, it would have required them to build a second fence along, if you're looking at that map, um, it would have been up in the top, uh, right corner. They would have had to build a second fence, which would have resulted in basically a, a ten-foot strip, um, that has two fences, and would have basically have made a no man's land all the way through there. Um, and so, uh, the, the planning commission saw that that could be a safety issue, and so that's, that's why they approved that variance. Uh, and, uh, I believe the developer plans to landscape and irrigate and, uh, make that look nice. So, um, there was a perfectly good reason for that one. Um, one of the others was, the, the way this is designed, it is going to be, uh, basically you would have zero green space to maintain as a, as a property owner. Um, and so they had to ask for a variance so that the property owners would not have green space. But this property is actually gonna have more than the required green space for the entire project. Uh, it's just going to be all open spa, or common areas maintained by the POA. Uh, and then the other that was interesting was, if you look at the, the access point there, it's a, an odd-shaped property. And for our, uh, fire equipment to be able to get in and navigate there, um, they were asking for a five-foot variance so that they could build, uh, five feet closer to Country Club Parkway. And part of that was for safety reasons, so that our equipment could get in and navigate through that area. Um, but if you looked in the, the packet, um, the planning commission, I'm sorry, um, the city staff and the planning and zoning department had actually looked at the, uh, Country Club Parkway, and most of those houses are built between forty to forty-five feet from the park. Parkway, and this project will sit about 42 feet from the Parkway. So even though they're requesting a variance, it, it matches what's all up and down Country Club Parkway. So, I just thought it was interesting that there are, you know, there's a reason we have a variance process, and, um, all three of these, um, it, it, they were good reasons for variances, in my opinion, but, uh, if you look at the Planning Commission packet for this past time, they had a lot of good renderings of what they planned to build. So I just wanted to throw those out there, and I guess my other comment on this is, we have approved housing in the past where we are taking large swaths of land and putting rooftops on them. And here we have 29, uh, owner-occupied, you know, individual lots that will be built in a, a townhome setting. And I just think it's important personally that we have different styles of residential living. Um, I can kind of picture who is gonna be living here, it's gonna be somebody that doesn't wanna maintain a yard. The older I get, the less I wanna do that, not surprise some. Uh, uh, and then they also wanna play golf, and the Country Club spoke in support of this. So, uh, I, I just think, you know, this is about this and about other projects that we may see later on, I think it's important that we have different residential styles in our city. We can't, I, I just don't think we can continue putting up rooftops and taking up valuable acreage, uh, with single-family homes all over the place. So, uh, I, I really appreciate this design coming forward, and thought it was a good
Any additional, um, discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-07?
Salute.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to adopt that resolution. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no?
No.
Can I get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Mazoni?
No.
Oh, pardon me, let me make sure. Okay, I shifted the mic, if you could redo that.
Councilmember Mazoni?
No.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
No.
Councilmember Shin?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
So, uh, it is, it, effectively the vote is four-four, um, uh, and we need five for it to pass. The mayor can vote to pass a, uh, resolution, and so, I will, uh, I, I elect to vote and vote yes on this matter. Um, and really quickly, one of the, I, I didn't, I, I think it's important for, uh, a few different things. One, Mammell Country Club has very similar housing very close to it. Um, that is these, uh, townhomes that are right there along the property. Um, second of all, when, this was previously, uh, zoned for something that was supposed to be commercial, I didn't speak to this property owner, uh, that had this property, but the, um, uh, I believe it was the Albright Edition, which was just across, um, um, the entrance there. And, uh, they had a commercial project that they thought was gonna go forward, and, uh, in order to anchor that, that, that property and to, um, get it developable commercially, they, they said they needed 30,000 cars a day down, um, Country Club Parkway, uh, for that project to be economically viable. I don't know about you, but there's not gonna be 30,000 cars driving down Country Club Parkway, and we don't want 30,000 cars driving, a day, driving down Country Club Parkway. Uh, one of the issues that we're seeing with a lot of these commercial entities that are strip centers and the like, are that they, they just not getting the traffic counts past them. Um, the Country Club came out, spoken, uh, Country Club of Arkansas, Mr. Jenkins came out and spoke in favor of this, he thought it would complement well their, uh, golf course, and that weighed heavily. So, we're past the vote, I, I normally don't like explaining votes, but I also don't like breaking ties either, so I felt like I should make my case. All right, um, with that, we will move on to, um, the next agenda item, which is Resolution 2022-08, Authorizing Mayor Settlement Participation in Opioid Litigation. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2022-08, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute settlement participation forms related to the nationwide opiate class action litigation, specific to the endo settlement and for other purposes.
Uh, I know many of y'all are aware of the, uh, ongoing opioid litigation, um, y'all authorized a settlement, um, a few months back. In the council packet, you should have seen the, uh, email from, uh, John Wilkerson, General Counsel for the Arkansas Municipal League, uh, um, explaining a little bit there. Um, and this isn't too dissimilar. Madam City Attorney, did you have anything to add?
Uh, not really, I, I mean, I think the email is pretty self-explanatory, this is just a, an additional agreement, and cities of a certain size are required to, um, specifically sign on to it, and it's only applicable to cities of a certain size, so we are fortunate to have this opportunity.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Motion to approve Resolution 2022, but wait.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. That concludes new business, we'll move on to, uh, mayor's comments, the first comment, uh, I was gonna make. Liz appropriately stole the thunder in that we hope to have the audit report, um, by the auditor, um, uh, given at the next city council meeting. Y'all will be, don't forget to grab, uh, a copy of the, um, annual financial report on your way out, um, please look it over, uh, uh, as you will. Um, and, um, I wanted to give a shout-out to the snow crew and Public Works, Street Department, sanitation, for doing a, a really, uh, good job this last snowstorm. They said thankfully it wasn't nearly as, uh, bad as it was last year, but, um, uh, I received several compliments from people who, uh, uh, either traveled to north of Rock and Little Rock, or lived in Little Rock and came this way. I had a buddy that, um, lived in Little Rock and he came out, and he wanted to know who the city hired to do the snow crew, 'cause surely that wasn't done by, uh, city staff. So shout-out to them, I, I ride them hard, but a lot of times they deserve it, and, uh, this is occasion where they deserve, uh, all the accolades for, uh, being out. And, you know, just a reminder for those that don't know, when, when, when snow or ice is incoming, we've got members of, um, the snow crew that, that actually bunk, there's a bunk room at, at Public Works, and they're on standby, ready to go, uh, and then they'll, they'll stay there for several days until the job gets done. Uh, and so I was joking with, uh, Mr. Hogan that, uh, I showed him a video of me sledding down the street with my, uh, son in my lap, and he goes, "Yeah, I might like snow days if I ever got to enjoy them." But snow days for him are days where he doesn't see his family, so, to, to, to his crew, shout-out for that, so. Um, just a, a quick update on, it, it's come up a whole lot, um, the Crystal Hill, uh, Reconstruction Project, we have a new, um, uh, expected, uh, finish date, uh, and that is June 10th. Um, obviously, uh, markets, uh, there can, there can be a lot that delays that, uh, but it's, it's the first time since we originally had the contract that we had that date that we were expecting the project to be done by. So, because that's been such a, a hot topic issue, uh, I just wanted to pass that on. With that, we will move to councilmember comments. Councilmember Holt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items, um, this is past tense, our representative, Paul Elliott, from the Plaski County Quorum Court, wanted me to specifically, uh, make note that he had signed off on the, uh, issue regarding the, um, tractor supply, uh, development, and it was very important to him, so I told him I would report that and make record of it, that he did sign off on it. Uh, secondly, um, if I may borrow the words of the now-re-elected, um, Commissioner, uh, Planning Commissioner, Mr. Greg Johnson, borrow his words, you heard it from him, not me, that we are running out of land to be developed. I think it is a message that is well should be heard, and let's make certain that from this day forward, that we pay very close attention to what we develop on what land, because there will be no more after it's taken. And thank you for his comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any additional councilmember comments? Seeing none, Madam City Attorney?
No comments.
Madam City Clerk?
Just a couple. Um, I wanna say to the public, if anyone is interested in getting on my distribution list, finding out when our meetings are, what's gonna be on the agenda, you can send me an email, cityclerk@mammell.org, and I'll be happy to get you on my distribution list. I also send out if there's gonna be any, uh, changes or testing for police and fire. So, uh, again, it's cityclerk@mammell.org, I'll be happy to include you on my distribution list. And then I wanted to, uh, also remind the folks out there that'll be watching tomorrow that we do have the proposed Ward map still available for viewing at City Hall, and we are open between eight and five. We would love to have, uh, input from the, uh, from the public. You know, this is our city, and this is the time to make comments, and I want you guys to remember, you can view that map in the lobby of City Hall, eight to five. Um, last thing that I wanted to point out to you guys, next meeting will be on a Tuesday, we have, uh, President's Day this month. And that's it. Congratulations on the appointments.
Uh, I believe that concludes business. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
I've got a motion, did I hear a second? And a second, all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries, we adjourn. Thank you very much.